Good morning, everybody. Welcome again to Council Chambers. It is now 10:15.
Morning, everybody. Welcome again to Council Chambers. It is now 10:15.
How are you?
Good morning, everybody. Welcome again to City Hall, to Council Chambers, and to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, May 15, 2002. The Los Angeles City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and we always invite the public to not only attend council meetings, but to participate as well. We can also be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
[Inaudible] 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 Ten members present in the corner, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Before beginning with the agenda for today, we do have one presentation by Councilmember Laban and Councilmember Grul.
I'd like to call the great people from NoHo, up here from North Hollywood, California. They're right here. Give them a big hand. This is Don Eitner, Ken Banks, Nancy Bianconi, John McCray are part of the NoHo Arts Festival. And what is great about the city of Los Angeles is that neighborhoods throughout our city, we have a very special ambassador here, who's going to hear from him in a few moments, but what's great about our city is that we celebrate in our neighborhoods. And NoHo has an absolutely fabulous festival this weekend. It's on the end of the Metro Rail Line, right in the heart of North Hollywood. This festival will have artisans that make up this district, theater, all the great things that people like to see and do. Ward Wilson would like the great NoHo Art Festival, one of our great reporters from Los Angeles. But I would like to ask Councilmember Wendy Grul to say a few words, because we share North Hollywood in partnership with the city of Los Angeles.
Yeah, it's very nice that Councilmember Laban and I share this neighborhood and community, and share so many of the interests and sometimes challenges that we face, and making sure that this NoHo Arts community becomes, I think, the vision that all of us see, which is an area in which we can have people go and see the art, go to theater, go to dinner, and really be in the San Fernando Valley and have that arts district. The people behind me and that are standing with Councilmember Laban have really taken the bull by the horns and said, "We're going to make our community better." "We're going to make sure that we provide services and programs that encourage all of our neighbors across the San Fernando Valley and across the city of Los Angeles to come visit North Hollywood and the NoHo area." This Arts Festival, ten years, and it's this Saturday and Sunday in our community, and we encourage everyone to be there. But I want to stand here with Councilmember Laban and the representatives behind me and say thank you. Thank you for what you do every day. Thank you for making this festival something that we get people from all over the city and county who participate. So we're pleased to acknowledge the NoHo Theater and Arts Festival. We'll see you all there. I ask all my council colleagues, hopefully that they'll come out and visit and participate. So just want to add my congratulations today to the NoHo Arts Festival. Congratulations.
I also, what Wendy said, I know not all the council members could come, but even if your staffs come, because the great thing about going to festivals in different parts of the city, whether it's in Amphidale, or whether it's in the West Valley, we get ideas to see how other people celebrate the fun of their community. Don Eitner, say hello to everybody and give a few plug words. Well, it is a unique festival because it is a theater and arts festival, and that's the total focus. So we have four stages and a huge kit courts area for arts and crafts, and yes, a lot of parking, and a very welcoming group of people, and it is free, so the public can come for free. So get on the red line, come up to North Hollywood, and from the rest of the valley, come across and come see us. And thank you very much. I want to thank Councilman Laban and Councilwoman Grul for the recognition. Thank you very much. You're very welcome. And last, and Don Lee is the great artistic component of NoHo. Mary Garcia, who was working together to create that great artery. Mary, for a few words.
I'd just like to say that we hope that we see all of you this weekend, and that this is one of the components to the artery that is a project that Tom Laban has put on that will be linking communities through the arts. So please come out and see us.
Last, but not least, Ken Banks. I want to thank both Councilmembers Laban and Councilperson Wendy Grul. Without their help, this thing wouldn't go on. And also, and the staff, 100%, and this is going to be the 10th annual, and it really is, this thing has gotten better and better and better each year. This will be really a pinnacle. Thank you all for the recognition. All right, now, as they do in Hollywood, they do it in NoHo. It's time for the picture. Rod Butch, here we go. Line it up for take one. Let's celebrate NoHo this weekend, everybody. We have a very special delegation with us in Los Angeles from Kenya. They're here learning about the city of Los Angeles, the county, and the region, and the importance of Los Angeles as it relates to the world, and also the importance is that this city and this region must look out to the world so that we can relate better to all the world. And it's great to have the Kenyan delegation with us this morning. With me today is Peter Nkuli. I want to say it prettier than it is. Nkuli. Ambassador Peter Nkuli, not only a promotion, but a great welcome to Los Angeles.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much, everyone. Thank you very much for having us here today. My name, as you heard, is Peter Nkuli, the commercial attache in the embassy of Kenya in Washington. And the reason for being here today is that Kenya has a delegation of 30 businesses that have come all the way from Kenya, East Africa, to LA, and they want to do business, they want to connect, they want to be part of what is happening out here in California. We have not been out in this part in the US for a long time as a country, but when we decided that we want to come, we chose California. And we chose LA as the place that we thought was the most appropriate for this. And we have been here since Sunday, the 12th, and we are staying here until the end of the week, the 18th. All the members of the delegation are not here. Only five of us could come. Reason being that they are all about the place, attending different meetings, but they'll be very happy to meet some of you later on at an opportune moment. If you allow me, I'll just introduce briefly, or allow them even better to say their own name and what they do. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Peter. I'm delighted to be here. My name is John Masila. I am the Director of Industry. And my job basically is to promote industrial development in the country. And we're looking forward to attracting investments from you people, and having you come over and do business with us. Not only by buying our products, but by coming to invest in Kenya. And I think it's all about making money. And we're happy to know that we are with very, very good businessmen in LA. Thank you very much.
My name is Luca Banda from Investment Promotion Center in Kenya. And our purpose of being here is to interact with the LA business people so that we can attract investments into Kenya, and also trade from both sides, inside into Kenya, and also into California. Thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you in the future businesses.
My name is Justice Doto. I am the Chairman of Kenya's Export Processing Zones Authority. In our zones, export processing zones, we facilitate investors to manufacture for export. And we are here to encourage investors from the US to come and invest in our zones, where we offer special incentives to our investors so as to allow to help. where we offer special incentives to our investors so as to allow to help them produce for export at lower costs, at faster, and at smoother, with smoother operations. So we look forward to having investors from this country. Thank you.
My name is Albert Kummo, Chief Executive of Export Processing Zones Authority. Mine is just to tell you, if you are producing for American market and you'd like to produce the same products more cheaply, then you are welcome to Kenya to produce the same products for export into American market under Export Processing Zones Authority. And we give a lot of incentives, which probably later, if we come around and meet, we'll let you know. Thank you.
Well, it just goes to show how great the world is, that we have people travel to promote each other, to bring the world, to tie it together. We have the largest port, Los Angeles, Long Beach Port is the largest port in the United States. All that commerce, all that travel. We hope you great success. We welcome you on behalf of the mayor of Los Angeles, on behalf of the City Council, and all the people. And know that Kenya is such a special place. And usually, we see great Kenyans here on the first Sunday in March every year, as they usually run and win the Los Angeles Marathon. We hope you win during your marathon week here as the Kenyan delegation here in the city of Los Angeles. Welcome to the city of angels.
Mr. Garcia.
I just wanted also, Councilmember Garcia, welcome you as well. He used to be a resident of East Africa, spent a good deal of time in Kenya as well, the Chair of the Economic Development Committee here, and hope that we can encourage you as well to make investments here. It's a two-way street. We welcome Kenyan investors to be here in Los Angeles, but with the apparel trade, many other links that clearly both of our countries share. It's a real honor to have you here today, and I hope you also get the chance to visit some of the Kenyan community that lives here. I'm sure you are. But the African Community Resource Center in the 13th District, the district I represent, is one of the largest community resource centers for African immigrants in the United States of America. Nikki Testai, who's Eritrean, runs it, but there's a number of Kenyans who also are part of that. So we encourage you to be there too, and thank you for coming.
Come on, jump in the picture, Eric. Jump in the picture and give me your card so you can make good on all those promises. Thank you, members of council, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. Madam Clerk, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Han moves, and Mr. Pacheco seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Burton seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, item number two, there's a request to continue that, applicant requests continuance to June 26.
Members request to continue item number two, without objection.
On the regular agenda, item notice for public hearing, item number one, is a public convenience necessity in Council District Four. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, we have cards on that item. Let's call it special.
Okay. The next items, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items three through 13, and I understand there's a request on behalf of Councilmember Reyes to continue item number seven.
Request to continue item number seven by Council District One for how many days?
That's until Friday.
To Friday, which is May 17th, without objection. Item seven shall be continued.
And the rest of the items, that would be items three through 13.
Items three through 13 now before us. Public hearings haven't been held. Committee, are there any specials? Mr. Weiss? Item eight called special, I'm sure by more than one member. Item 10 called special by Mr. Pacheco. Any other specials? Items three, 13, any other specials? Ms. Han? Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those items are approved. Forthwith on item number four. Next item.
Next one is Mr. Preston, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 14 through 35.
Items 14 through 35 now before us. Do not have requests for the public to be heard on these items. We shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Without objection, we shall consider items 14 through 35. Members, are there any specials? 32 called special by Ms. Zine.
30 called special.
30 called special by Ms. Han. Any other specials? 29 called special by Ms. Misakowski. Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 36 is a closed session. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold closed session items on the desk.
On the continuation agenda, items 37 and 38 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Items 37 and 38 now before us. Members wishing to call either of those special. 37 and 38. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Those are approved.
And item number 37 has an ordinance on it, so that ordinance will go over to next week.
Did we lose somebody momentarily? We had 12 members a minute ago.
Yes, we did.
And do we anticipate a return of somebody?
Yes, they will. I believe they will be returning.
Okay, well, let's hold 37 on the desk if we can, for 12 members. Next items, please.
Next items, also on the continuation agenda, items 39 and 40 are items which public hearings have not been held, and I believe there's a request on behalf of Councilmember Galanter to hold that on the desk for her arrival.
Both of those items?
No, just item number 39.
Okay, let's hold 39 on the desk. Call it special from Ms. Galanter. Item 40 now before us. Anybody wishing to call item 40 special? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Item 40. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Forthwith on 28. Next item.
Going back to the items called special, item number one was called special, and it swears there are cards from the public.
Item number one now before us. Council calls for it at this time. Mercedes Guerrero?
Good morning to the City Council and members. My name is Mercedes Guerrero. I'm the owner of El Canaí Market. And we have that store since 1976. We've been operating of good through March 1996, we started leasing the market. But my last tenant, he just walked away with my liquor license, and now we are trying to get the license back to the store. And I would like the committee to approve the public convenience of necessity, so I can get back the liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes fellow comment for item number one. Thank you. Members wishing to be recognized on item number one. Mr. Laban is in the rear chambers. Well, let's hold this on the desk. It is a matter in Council District Four. Let's hold it on the desk and proceed with the next item.
Item number eight called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Okay, we do have cards on this item. Public hearing, members, as you know, was held two weeks ago. A motion from the floor would be required to open the public hearing. This is a matter in Ms. Perry's district. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a significant day, and I have many members of our community here and residents of the new proposed redevelopment area who've taken time to come down here and let you know their opinion. And I would like it very much if you would allow each one of them to get up and just say something one minute per person.
Okay, I believe that's a motion to reopen the public hearing. Is there a second? Ms. Han, seconds. Let's take a vote on that. The motion to reopen the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Okay, so the public hearing is now reopened, and several of the speakers, I believe, have been here before to testify on this item. What we'd like to do is limit the public hearing to about 10 minutes, and request that each of the speakers, I can have everybody's attention, please, request that each of the speakers limit their comments to one minute. And please, we'd appreciate not only your brevity, but if what you're wishing to say has been mentioned by one of the prior speakers, they are to not be repetitive or redundant. And again, about one minute per speaker, please, beginning with Orlando Ward, and followed by Robert Jones, Ollie Coleman III, and Julius Dowell. If you can all come forward at this time and just line up behind the podium. Go ahead. I'm asking the other speakers to come up now and line up behind the podium. Mr. Ward, go ahead.
Good morning, Council. My name is Orlando Ward. I'm with the Midnight Mission and a member of the Skid Row community. And I'd like to say most simply that we support redevelopment in this area. I'd like to also let you know that we are pleased to be a part of the process this year, or in this plan. There's some language that's in the plan that we support. We're very supportive of our councilperson, Janet Perry, I think Pacheco, and the rest of the council that are supporting this redevelopment activity. And we want to let you know that it's about revitalizing lives, not just buildings, not just streets. And we've got a lot of folks here with us today that are excited about the opportunities that this presents. So we ask that you support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robert Jones, Ollie Coleman III, and Julius Dowell.
Hello, my name is Robert Jones, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Union Rescue Mission. I'd like to speak about a little special program that we have there. It's called the Christian Leadership Disciple Program, and what it is, it helps recovering alcoholics and drug addicts like myself. I have four months' sobriety day. I'm an ex heroin addict, and now I have changed my life around, and I owe that to the Union Rescue Mission. And I want you to know that there are many of us here that are using the services that are provided by the mission, and that we all are trying to turn our lives around and be the law-abiding and tax-paying citizens that we're supposed to be. And we ask you to consider the redevelopment plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coleman, Mr. Dowell, followed by Reverend Eddie Olivas, and Derek Stanbury.
Good morning, Council. I'm Ollie Coleman. I'm the resident president of the Harbor Light Center Salvation Army. We have numerous centers around the city, and these centers are very important to get people such as myself reacclimated to the ways of society and to get ourselves back into the working force and put ourselves in a positive position to where we can make a way of living for ourselves. This is a very good program that I'm in, and I thank God for this program. And it should be held accountable that this program is for any and every one, regardless of race, creed, or color, and religion. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dowell.
Good morning. My name is Julius Dowell, and I'm from the Union Rescue Mission. I came to the Union Rescue Mission back in 1999. I came out of prison. My life was miserable. I was an addict and alcoholic. Today, I have a good job. I've been sober three years. I'm a good Christian. I'm a good father. I'm a good friend. I'm a good husband. All that. Thanks to the Union Rescue Mission. Without the Union Rescue Mission, none of this could be done. Because before I turned 40, I just knew I would not be alive. Today, I'm 43. Thanks to the Union Rescue Mission, they gave me new skills. They gave me everything. They gave me back my life. And without the Union Rescue Mission, I would not be here speaking to you today. So I just had to come down and share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Reverend.
I'd like to say good morning to everyone. My name's Reverend Eddie Olivas III. I've been associated with the Skid Row community for 15 years, and I just want to say this is a wonderful opportunity for us to take and for us to support, because what it's going to bring is integration. Skid Row is not a separate entity from Los Angeles. We need to integrate the community, and this is our opportunity to transform culture. And when you transform culture, you're transforming lives. And I think we should seize this opportunity, take it upon ourselves, and allow it to bring in a buy-in from small communities, from small businesses, and moreover, from the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stanbury, followed by Chaplain Bridget Wilson, Leonard Shapiro, and Carol Schatz.
My name is Derek Stanbury. I'm a recovering addict also at Harbor Light Center. For myself, I've been so ministered on life scale. Harbor Light has given me a chance for larger. We have both, we have programs, ready to put people who have been so small on life scale, as I said once before, to do better. And we're just looking for an opportunity to step into these positions, to do as well as we possibly can. Just look into your hearts, see what you think, and do what is best for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Leonard Shapiro. I've been covering the downtown scene for 22 years, and my heart breaks for these, breaks out for these people who need so much help in the development. And regardless of the CRA or not, they're going to get money one way or the other. I say that it's unfair for the City Council to give three minutes to any individual who wants to fight against a presentation that the CRA made here with all their experts for two hours. If you're going to be fair on this matter, you should allow us to bring all our efforts here. Sherry Curtis, Chris Sun, Joe Flax, Ralph Schaefer, and many others who could be in there. We got to understand one thing about redevelopment, any 2.4 billion dollar redevelopment, the biggest public project money that the city of LA has ever had, never went this high before. But they had to circumvent the Bernardi cap that he put on, the $750 million, and this is the way to come in with the back door. And they're coming in with the back door with a vengeance. I have records here from the county showing that the CRA in the downtown area, right now, we're trying to close the window. You see what they got there, 65.6% tax diversion, money that's supposed to come into the City Council, so you can use it on your police department, on your fire department, on your road department, and you can use it to clean up the air, that you can use anything. It goes into the hands of the developers. And it's not right. Somebody got to sit up. And I can't do it all in just a few minutes there. All you got to do is look around. They were here to remove blight in the downtown area. Blight means Skid Row, means Fifth Street, means Broadway, means the downtown area. They haven't touched it. It's just as bad today as it was 25 years ago.
Mr. Shapiro.
Hold it, hold it. You got to remember there. The main reason this has happened is because the CRA bureaucratic bumbling is completely inefficient. They don't know how to do anything. The record of the LSAS report shows that in 20 years, they built 21,000 units, and in the process, they destroyed 13,000. Net homes built, 8,000. And in 10 years alone, the CDD built 33,000 units. If you want to do a job like you're saying they're going to do down there, do it yourself. $2.1 billion is a lot of money to use. Let's make sure, like to use it properly. The CRA will use it improperly. Look at their whole record. 50, 50, 62 years, they've been bumbling around. They're trying to do a job for LA.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shapiro. Thank you very much.
Do it yourself.
My name is Chaplain Bridget Wilson, and I'm representing the women and children of Union Rescue Mission. We are in support of us passing this bill for redevelopment. We need this in our area. We're in support of what the board wants to do, and I just want you to please consider that, and then it pass.
Thank you very much. Ms. Carol Schatz, followed by Louis Blumberg, Michelle Brumet, and David Morgan.
Carol Schatz, President of the Central City Association, the Downtown Center Business Improvement District. Together, we represent over 500 businesses and property owners in the greater downtown area. I spoke to you last time about the general benefits to downtown revitalization that this new redevelopment area will provide. But let's talk specifics about housing and homelessness, which are a critical interest and concern to all of us. It will create 13,000 It will create thirteen thousand new housing units, a minimum of twenty-five percent to be affordable, rehabilitation of fifteen hundred single-room occupancy units, and relocation and expansion of homeless facilities to the tune of fifty-six-point-two million. Are these pie-in-the-sky numbers? No. Let's look at what tax increment produced for all of us, for the entire city of L.A. through the Bunker Hill tax increment and the Central Business District, which were recently closed down because the cap. A total of twenty-five thousand low-income units were spread throughout the city of Los Angeles. Out of the seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars of tax increment, a hundred million dollars went into homeless services and very low-income housing, two parks in Central City East, and job training and counseling services. That is the actual record. Let's repeat it and make sure that all downtown comes back to life. Thank you very much.
Ms. Blumberg, followed by Michelle Grummet, David Morgan, and Clementine Brown McMullin.
First of all, we need a public hearing where the public can speak because so much money's involved. I just want you all to remember, without redevelopment money, we built Century City, we built Warner Center, we built Wilshire Boulevard, and now we want two-point-four. And what are we, what are we going to get? What, what are we going to get for two-point-four billion? I mean, just as Leonard Shapiro talked about Skid Row, the Redevelopment Agency is in the middle of Skid Row. People are sleeping on the street in front of the Redevelopment Agency. If they can't even clean up their own front yard, how are they going to clean up the city? And as we all know, this money is diverted from, doesn't go into the general fund. So what happens is the infrastructure of the city doesn't get that money. It doesn't go to the water, it doesn't go to the streets, it doesn't go to the parks, it doesn't go to the libraries. We do not need this plan. And we know, we all know who's behind it. It's Philip Anshu, one of the richest men in the United States, who owns the fiber optic, who controlled the fiber optic cable system, who got the pipeline through because he's powerful and he's a major campaign contributor. That's what it's about.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm David, David Morgan, Hollywood Better Government Association. I had a talk with Councilman Ernie Bernardi yesterday. He hasn't been feeling well, but he urged us to come and help you vote down this project today. The Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association has also joined in opposition. And I want to mention that this violates the cap and two-thirds of the two-point-four billion will probably go to interest. It would be much more efficient if the city and the county would spend the money on a pay-as-you-go basis because here, one-point-six billion's going to go to interest. So these kind people who've come here, who are trying to improve their lives, will only get one-third of the money they might otherwise get if you people would finance directly. Now, the city can do everything that the CRA can do to help, help the social needs of the community and I urge it to do so. Now, what's happening here is the CRA is taking our tax money and the city is coming along and saying, "We have to increase taxes." They've increased parking fines astronomically, tow-away charges. It's terrible to pay these prices for minor parking tickets. They've increased business taxes. They're way too high, much higher than the surrounding cities. They've set up high sewer fees and all kinds of exactions to replace the money the CRA is taking from our public services. In Hollywood, we have maybe five to seven percent of the city and there's going to take, if they take two-point-four billion, then Hollywood would lose one-hundred-and-twenty million to one-hundred-and-seventy million of its public services.
I can ask you to conclude, please.
And the same thing happens to the other parts of the city. So I urge you to defeat this proposal and, and use pay-as-you-go financing.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm Louis Blumberg, representing the Los Angeles Unified School District as their consultant. I have previously delivered to the council both oral and written statements of our position very much in favor of this project. I don't know if the public and maybe even some of the councilpeople are unaware of the fact that money's from the CRA developments, there are entitlements for all of these projects, funding for school district. An important factor in the school financing are these funds which come from these projects. The project is a well-thought-out project. We are prepared to build up to facilities for some thirteen thousand students as predicted in the preliminary report, the final report on this project. Again, we, on behalf of the Los Angeles Unified School District, heartily endorse and are very much in favor of this project. We would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michelle Grummet, followed by Clementine Brown McMullin, Jeff Byrd, and Howard Watts.
Good morning. I'm a mother at the Union Rescue Mission with my two boys. And I believe the Redevelopment Center would help us to move out of the downtown area because I would like to go to work. I feel kind of nervous. And become a tax-paid citizen again. My children and I have never been without a home. This is the longest time we ever have and something new would be great to help us get out of that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff Byrd, Howard Watts, and Robin Ritter-Simon.
My name is Jeffrey Byrd. I'm the chief operating officer over at Union Rescue Mission, also representing the Los Angeles Central Providers Collaborative. We've come here today at City Hall, the seat of city government, representing the poorest of the poor, the downtrodden, the forgotten, to make sure that we never forget. This morning, city council has afforded an opportunity to begin to remember our responsibility that we have to those who are less fortunate. The Center City Redevelopment Plan has the potential to greatly affect the lives of the poor and disenfranchised that live in and around the downtown area for the next thirty years. Successful revitalization cannot be achieved unless all impacted have an equal voice. At its core, the Redevelopment Plan focuses on providing the project area with an economic facelift. We have the standard building projects, infrastructure improvements, housing development, rehabilitation undertakings, along with efforts to reduce homelessness. CRA stated goals of alleviating blight and transforming downtown into a symbol of pride as the major center of L.A. metropolitan area requires more than a nip and a tuck. The surgery necessary here is a long and lasting one, which will require enormous effort and perseverance. This historic pact between business, government, and community residents, homeless service providers, all working together for a common good cannot be ignored. With equal partnership between social needs and economic development, we have an opportunity to succeed in improving the lives of those all stakeholders within the project area. Now, the hundred-and-fifty million dollars of the two-point-four billion dollars over the next thirty years is a relatively small amount that goes towards helping the issues that we're talking about. However, it represents a start. And more importantly, we must finish it by staying engaged, by insisting that we attack the poor issues, the lack of decent-paying jobs, the shortage of suitable housing, the need for supportive services, daycare, centers, and other such services.
If I can conclude, please.
So inclusion of the forgotten many by the chosen few on a project-by-project basis is the only way to gain assurances that the community at large will be redeveloped. So we must insist that we be at the table, that we be heard, that when economic development, when the jobs come in, that there is a significant percentage of those jobs that are set aside to help the folks that are in the community that need the need the most. Ultimately, our society will be remembered, not for how grand the edifices were that we erected, but what we did to erect those with the least.
Thank you very much. Howard Watts. Is Howard Watts here? Robin Ritter-Simon.
Good morning, good morning, council members. I'm Robin Ritter-Simon and I'm here this morning representing the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce and the fourteen hundred businesses and thousands of employees that they employ. We're here this morning to register our support for this project. We do believe that this is a project that will bring well-needed, good-paying jobs to the community as well as bringing well-needed housing to the area. The chamber has long fought for jobs and housing in the community and this is a project that will bring both of those to a community that desperately needs it. We encourage you and urge you to support this redevelopment plan.
This concludes public comments for item number eight. Turning now to council discussion. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I, I believe what you've seen here today is an overwhelming sentiment that this plan is about what we said it was about, which is housing for people at all income levels, housing for people, permanent housing, housing that treats people with dignity, that gives them their own bathroom and their own kitchen and doesn't house them like cattle, but houses them like human beings. With social service support for those who have dual diagnoses, mental illness, substance abuse, victims of domestic violence, women and children, and those who just need a hand. So I hope and I ask for unanimous vote today so that we can get moving on the business at hand, which is to make sure that we take care of everyone else.
Before I call, before I call the next speaker, let me say two things. Excuse me. Yes, Mr. Watts. Please, please stand at the podium, please. Your name was called. I'll give you some, I'll give you two minutes now or give you a minute now. But your name was called. Let me also announce this. Let me also announce this. Members, I have on the queue waiting to be heard Mr. Pacheco, Mr. White, and now Mr. Zine. I believe there were some names in the queue earlier when the board was cleared. So if you do want to be recognized on this item, council members ask that you press your button again. Mr. Watts, for a minute.
My name's Howard Watts. Many people have forgotten me because I used to monitor city council over and over again. I have in my possession right now a protest from the city administration office of the County of Los Angeles. They're against this project. Can you believe other elected officials are going up against you? And three of you, at the moment that I've been told, have not voted for this project yet. It may be that they are going to be doing it today. I want to say, this project, I talked to Ernie Bernardi. And I want to tell you, this project, they claim is not going to raise the cap of seven-hundred-and-fifty million, all the way up to whatever you want it to go. This agency and other agencies try to raise that cap. Ernie and her lawyer fought you in court over the raising of the cap. I don't understand why just brand-new council members who have come on this board have not paid attention to what happened in the past. If you forget what happened in the past, you're going to forget what happened in the present. You have been elected to protect the general public and the taxpayers very heavily. I have documents that are going to be presented to a court of law and you are going to be shocked to find out that certain other government agencies are opposing this project because, first of all, when and why do we need a hotel? Why in heaven's name do we need all of the shop, all of the parking spaces? Take it up, downtown, around that convention center and Staples Center and Vado Way. Staples Center honored us yesterday by beating a team in basketball. I want to say, I wish we could get this city council to do the same thing and tear this project apart because if we don't, we are going to have a major problem if the public ever finds out what you've been doing behind Ernie's head.
Thank you very much. This closes the public comment. No, we're done with public comment. Thank you. Your name wasn't called on this item. Another item possibly, but not this item. Okay, returning to council discussion. Mr. Pacheco is the next speaker.
Mr. President and colleagues, I write in support of the Center City Redevelopment Project area because I believe that our work is not done in downtown. We know that many of the project's goals are to preserve the historic facades and buildings that we have in downtown. The adaptive reuse, your use of those buildings, under objective number eleven of the plan is to preserve key landmarks. I also want to tell you that we've been working very hard on the Broadway Entertainment District. You know that Broadway here in Los Angeles has the country's finest collection of historic theaters. Broadway today is an important commercial center for the Latino community. We know that it's been, we've been working very hard to improve by providing public street furniture, by working with the local property owners to use, to clean their buildings and have them more accessible to the public. We also want to work in the Fashion District and create facade improvement programs, street scape enhancements, and street furniture. And many of the jobs that are built in the Fashion District are by the working poor and we need to provide decent, safe, and adequate housing in this area. I tell you this because, as you know, if we allow people to view downtown as an isolated area, that secession, the secessionists are going to attack us for trading the funds away from the city into an island. I tell you that because, as you know, right now, when we look at, and Tom LaBancera's the map yesterday from the historic Los Angeles, if we look at the community's impact by downtown... And let me give you a small example of that. There's a Fourth Street corridor between Ball Heights and downtown that during peak hours, eleven hundred vehicles cross that area. Eleven hundred vehicles an hour. If I can build a downtown where people live there, people have an opportunity to work there, and we have more people in downtown providing a vibrant economy, then I believe it will alleviate some of the pressure on the surrounding communities. When I drive down Alvarado and get to Olympic and see a huge sign in the Pico Union District that says Staples this way, I know that surrounding communities are being impacted by downtown and we can create an organic, vibrant downtown with housing for everyone, for people who have affordable housing, for market rate. I know that's complete pressure on all the surrounding communities and that's why today, as I stand before you, I ask you to support this, not for the business interest. As we pointed out, we know that there's certain individuals and we have a motion coming up that's going to take care of the whole issue of subsidies for a football stadium. But colleagues, look at this as a way of creating another connected community in downtown with Pico Union, Ball Heights, Lincoln Heights, South Central. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Mr. White.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and colleagues. And I first want to acknowledge the tremendous efforts of Mr. Farrar and his board, Mr. Charlin and his staff, Ms. Perry in her office, Mr. Pacheco in his office, in bringing this important matter before us today and all their hard work and hard efforts. But I have to tell you, after last week's debate, I was concerned that we haven't had enough input into this process from those in the academic community, the people who study this type of issue for a living. And so I called a couple people who are really the leading, among the leading academics in L.A. in the area of growth and urban revitalization. And they raised additional concerns, which only buttress the concerns I had the week before. In fact, one of them directed my attention toward a study done by the Public Policy Institute of California, a nonpartisan think tank on the area of redevelopment. And the study is subsidizing redevelopment in California. Let me read for you some quotes from the study. First, from the foreword. "The study finds that redevelopment projects do not increase property values by enough to account for the tax increment revenues they receive. Overall, the agencies studied in this study, and it's a comprehensive study, over the last decade or two in California, overall, the agencies stimulated enough growth to cover just above half of those tax revenues." Let me read you something else from this study that concerns me. "Fewer than one quarter of the projects studied came close to being responsible for the..." Fewer than one quarter of the projects studied came close to being responsible for the property tax revenues they received. How large was the overall subsidy dollar value? About 51 to 61 percent. And so what that means net-net here, folks, is that if we're talking about a $2.5 billion project over 30 years, and we talk about $80 million a year roughly being what we're talking about if you annualize it, you could be talking about a subsidy of the amount of $40 million a year if you just do that math based on the analysis of the Public Policy Institute of California. That concerns me. We have a lot of serious questions, serious questions that I think need serious public policy analysis before we rush forward with a project of this magnitude and scope. And I want to tell you one more thing with respect to the NFL issue. Let's be very clear about this. The NFL needs Los Angeles a lot more than Los Angeles needs the NFL. And before I participate in an action that will enable the NFL or a group of owners to build a field for grown-ups to play in in downtown Los Angeles, I challenge the NFL and the ownership group to come to this council, to come to the CRA, and tell us what they will do to increase the opportunities for kids to play in this city, and tell us what they will bring to the table for the kids and for the environment of Los Angeles. We don't need the NFL nearly as much as the NFL needs us, and what kind of bargain are we driving by this vote today? Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. 2.4 billion, a lot of money, feed a lot of people, put roofs over a lot of heads. And the speculation emerges about the football stadium. And now there's comments about a hotel. There's no question, nominated for this city, and I remember going down to downtown with my folks and going to the theaters in that area, going to Clifton's Cafeteria, and remembering what downtown represented. And it absolutely has deteriorated over the years, there's no question about that. And when downtown closes at 5:00, the homeless set up their encampments in the area south of City Hall. You can see the cardboard boxes on Los Angeles Street, south of the Otani Hotel, and then that other adjoining area. So there's no question revitalization is important, and we need to do something to improve the area around the Civic Center. Carol Schatz and her group, the Business Improvement District, taxing the businessmen in that area to clean the streets, to add security, that's on the backs of the businessmen in that community. They've done a successful job in the Fashion District in that area. I cannot support this proposal with the hidden agenda, and I will say a hidden agenda, when the billionaires who build Staples, when the billionaires who want to make more money are going to make it on the backs of the taxpayers. And I feel for the homeless, I feel for the displaced, and I support the mission to help people, but at what cost to the taxpayers of the city of Los Angeles? I look at the Amundson project out in my area. No one's asking for a subsidy for Amundson. It was already stated about Century City, no one asked for a subsidy for that, no one asked for subsidy for Warner Center. We need to do something to revitalize an area. We're going to do affordable housing, and we're going to create jobs. That's wonderful. We have a Coliseum, a memorial Coliseum. Do we need to have two football stadiums in an area if we don't have a football team? The people of the San Fernando Valley have been frustrated for a long period of time. The people in the San Fernando Valley have been proponents of secession for a long period of time, and I'm not going to feed to the attitude that no one cares about the taxpayers, not only the valley, but of the entire city. 2.4 billion dollars into a project with hidden agendas is not what I can support. There have been no public hearings, there's been no input from the communities of Los Angeles. We're redistricting the city right now, and we're out there in the communities having redistricting hearings. We had a charter commission, we brought the city of Los Angeles hearing for the people for charter commission. But this particular project, we want to go the fast track and get it done without a lot of public input. We haven't taken one community meeting out of this area to discuss this issue. And if we really want to be serious about redevelopment, let's be candid with the voters, tell them what they're going to receive. And now we hear about the San Diego Chargers talking, now we hear about the NFL talking. There's always going to be someone talking about some master project. We need to revitalize, but not with this particular hidden agenda. And Councilman Pacheco and I have a motion, if and if this passes, and I'm voting no on it, I'm candid about that, we have additional protections to make sure that if a stadium does come to this area, it's not going to be on the backs of the taxpayers. Staples is a thriving area, and a thriving area is making a lot of money. It's those people who want this football stadium, it's those people who want this project to complete.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Ms. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to speak, because we already had a tense debate before, but I'd like to rise to just a couple of things that were said by my two colleagues, Councilmember Weiss, Councilmember Zine. I think this does come down to a fundamental question, and we have many people with institutional memories here about the mistakes of redevelopment in the past, and we would be dishonest if we didn't recognize that, whether we're with the CRA or outside of it, whether we've been the most vocal critics or it's most vocal defenders. We have to be honest and say that that has happened in the past. But the reason why Century City built itself, the reason why Porter Ranch built itself, the reason why Amundson Ranch built itself, is because those are wealthy areas, and wealthy areas will always build themselves. But for those areas that are not wealthy, we have two options. We either say that they're, well, we have three, we can do nothing and say we're an uncaring society, but I think everybody in this room acknowledges that we are a caring society. We just disagree about how to get there sometimes. The second option we have is we can say, well, let's raise taxes on everybody to provide these services. Let's make sure that people in the valley pay for downtown and raise their taxes so that we can help people get decent housing and have the social services they need. The county, interestingly enough, who was threatening to sue us at one time sued, we had to sue them because they said that taking care of the homeless wasn't their responsibility. And we failed as well because the city wasn't really taking care of the homeless as well. So we now had to sue each other in order to say, no, it's your problem, no, it's your problem. We finally created an authority that begins, but inadequately, to address homelessness. So we can either raise taxes elsewhere from existing people throughout the city, or we can say, local control, which a lot of people were talking about with secession, let areas like Hollywood, like downtown, like the valley, pay for it themselves within their own areas and control that. Now, where I agree with critics of the CRA is we haven't always had that local control. In fact, people have been shut out of that process, or people, PACs and CACs have been disbanded. We have opportunities to bring in that, and sometimes the agency has been too far removed from the grassroots. But this is a project where downtown will pay for itself, where we can go to people out in Silmar and say, who are saying, I don't want my tax dollars going to this. And, Mr. Zine, I think I'm sympathetic to that as well, because I think that we can do this in a way that the money comes straight from the place that it is serving. That's what secession is about, that's what the local control is all about, and people are talking about polarization. The CRA potentially is that, potentially is that working every single day. So it comes down to a fundamental question. Do we believe in redevelopment? Do we believe in the poor areas in doing something? Something to make sure those areas are turned around? And it's not a hotel for a billionaire, it's jobs for people who don't have them. It's not a stadium, because I will look just as harshly, Mr. Weiss, at any stadium proposal that comes forward. And I have to make sure that that's going to be something that's money well-spent, but that's not what this plan is about, and it's been confused together. So today, we are talking about a redevelopment area, ladies and gentlemen, in which we can do the right thing, and we can do it in a better way with less bond interest paid, we can do it in a better way, that we connect with the community, but we have to give this board and this council and this area the opportunity to do that, to learn from that past, but to fundamentally not turn our heads away from the moral imperative to do the right thing downtown.
Ms. Garcetti. Mr. Lanzinger.
People are always telling me how long I've been here. Believe me, there are days when it feels like it. And I've heard many debates about redevelopment, and I've heard many debates about downtown, and I have heard many communities who are outside, on the outer parts of Los Angeles, say that they don't care about downtown, and downtown has nothing to do with them. Wrong. The fact is, downtown is, first of all, it's the center of our city, and it's a very interesting and vibrant place, but it does need help. It is also a place that is not, at this moment, producing as much for the city in the form of tax revenues and sales tax revenues and business tax revenues as it could. And if we were producing as much of those things as it could, we would have more money available in the city of Los Angeles to provide services throughout the city. So we have to get there. Right now, downtown is in some measure a wasting asset, because it could be producing so much more for our collective prosperity. And if that were the case, we would have more money for police officers and firefighters and street sweepers and sewage treatment and water conservation facilities. We are, we are going through a very tight budget this year, and we will go through very tight budgets again, but they won't be quite as tight if we are able to make downtown produce for this city what it can produce for the city. That's in addition to the housing that needs to be provided and the jobs that need to be provided. But I am really tired of people saying downtown is not part of our city or the city of Los Angeles. Downtown can be what makes this whole city grow and thrive, and that's what redevelopment is all about. So I urge you to support this project. I think it would be very helpful.
Mr. LaBanc.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Downtown, downtown. Remember "Pattula Cark's" great song, Ed Sullivan, mid-'60s. Downtown, but there's a downtown throughout Los Angeles. Downtown San Pedro, downtown Canoga Park, downtown North Hollywood, where today we honor the people who are putting on the NoHo Arts Festival. I rise to support downtown Jan Perry and this effort here to put it together. I rise to support this. And I also want to tell my friends, if the National Football League or any other entity has a proposal, they will have to come to this council and get our cooperation and our assurances before anything is ever approved, and there's nothing. And I've been around a long time, and I do enjoy the game of football, but the most important game is the game of life, and this redevelopment agency and its partnership with the community is what we should do. And I went to a great sporting event last Friday night at the Union Rescue Mission, where they were playing basketball, and they're going to challenge us to play basketball on the court. There were some better players than I saw last night on TV. I wasn't at the game, I've never been to a Lakers game, only an Inglewood. But anyway, it was great to see the activity that's going on at the mission to help rekindle people who need help and need the charge, need the hand to go up and to do this. And the work of others that the redevelopment agency is doing, with people like Tom Gilmore and others who are taking the old buildings and the historic core and opening the doors up so people can live downtown and make it an 18-hour city. I don't ever think we'll be a 24-hour city, but I think 18 is pretty good. I leave people asleep. It's good to get rest, but I think this is real important. But it's our challenge to make sure that redevelopment agency does the right job for the people, the cities, community, redevelopment agency, to help in that accord. In downtown North Hollywood, in downtown San Pedro, in downtown Canoga Park, downtown, any downtown is very important. So I just wanted to rise to support this and also assure people that if there's any proposal for the National Football League, that we will diligently look at that and make sure that it's done in the best interest of all of Los Angeles and the people of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mr. Lanzinger. Mr. Rudy Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, let me just simply offer the following observations. There are studies, and there are studies. A study prepared by the Advanced Policy Institute at the University of California at Los Angeles offered an assessment of the redevelopment agency in the city of Los Angeles over a 50-year period of its history. And let me just cite some of the more relevant pieces of this study. The primary role of the CRA in carrying out its mission is to formulate geographically based strategies designed to stimulate reinvestment and revitalization in areas of the city where the private sector acting alone has failed to achieve and/or sustain a quality living environment. And it goes on to conclude, we therefore conclude that the agency has been very effective in developing a downtown redevelopment strategy, which has evolved over the past 50 years. The agency has also been effective in seeing that new affordable housing is produced in areas of significant need and that in select areas, housing rehabilitation has accompanied the production of new affordable units throughout the city. Had there been no downtown redevelopment agency in Los Angeles for the past 50 years, the shape and extent of the downtown area would most likely be very different. Commercial development in certain areas, project areas, would not exist had it not been for redevelopment. I think I can go on to make the following claim. Los Angeles has distinguished itself as, in some ways, the capital of public-private partnerships. The entity that is most capable of causing that to take place in our city is the Community Redevelopment Agency. And while none of us stand to be unapologetic with respect or uncritical with respect to the CRA, we have an oversight role, we try to direct it and correct it when deemed appropriate. The bottom line is as follows. If we expect revitalization to take place in the city of Los Angeles, specifically in downtown, it seems to me that it is incumbent upon us to act accordingly, that is, to vote affirmatively this morning, to move this forward, send a clear message that public-private partnerships are alive and well in the city of Los Angeles and downtown is no exception to that. So I urge your affirmative vote this morning.
Mr. Burton.
Yeah, let me just clarify, cut through some of the stuff that's been flowing around here. I'm not, as I said before, and those who know my history in the city, not a great fan of CRA. And some of the people who spoke about previous projects were correct, they were not successful. However, that doesn't mean that we need to stop trying. I noticed that in this plan, a good portion of the old CBD, which was the previous project, is still included, that those are the areas that really need help and are not going to improve by themselves. It's easy to stand up and say that Warner Center and Porter Ranch and Amundson Ranch didn't need any help. These are new affluent areas that don't need support. The purpose of redevelopment is to pure blight. And we have a blighted area here, and that does not include a football team, by the way. And I guarantee you that I will not support one cent, if you, CRA people or anybody else thinks that I will support one cent of any public funds, including loans, to bring a football team to Los Angeles. You can think again, because I will not, and I hope this council does not. We've had experience with professional football teams who have left us in the lurch because it was for their financial benefit. Well, if it's going to be for their financial benefit, let them pay for it to come back. And what's wrong with the Coliseum? I think if there's going to be a football team in Los Angeles, let them come to the Coliseum. If they want to improve it and put those luxury boxes, excuse me, please, that we can, they can sell for a lot of money, let them invest in them themselves. But as for this area, one of the big pluses is the South Park area, which has an opportunity to develop today that was included in the old CBD but didn't get done. That area has an opportunity to get the hotel that we need, to which we'll bootstrap our convention center, which has been a drain upon this city for years. If we get a major hotel, maybe two there, and some shops and other, and residents that live in the area, that area will come back, and not only will it not be a drain on the public treasury, but it will pay dividends. So, please, you know, you're being very rude. You know, the purpose, it's okay to dissent and have an opinion, but be respectful when somebody else talks. You might learn something. The point is that the reason I'm supporting this is that I think we have an opportunity here, and if you note that all the new redevelopment projects that have taken place in the last several years have all had administrative cost cap, which means the money has to be used for redevelopment. It can't be used to pay staffs, keep the redevelopment agency employees going, because that's what's happened in the past. Not in the last few years, by the way, because we've eliminated that loophole. So I think we have a second chance here, and we have a chance to create a residential community downtown, which is desperately needed. The one reason that we don't have, downtown's fail, is because they don't have a residential community. If you look at New York, Manhattan, what is so successful about Manhattan? They have a residential community. You have that. You have that opportunity with South Park. You have an opportunity to bootstrap the convention center. I don't know what that's costing this city a year, but whatever it is, it'll be, it'll be a plus instead of a minus. And, you know, I just, I just, I just want to say that, you know, the important thing in a case like this is to think about what we do with our problems. And it doesn't affect any of the outlying areas. The increment money pays off, anything that's, everything that's generated pays off the bonds that are issued to cure the problem. And incidentally, Ernie Bernardi did not initiate the $750 million cap. It was done by the Blue Ribbon Committee, which I served on, and supported the $750 million cap which came to the council on the old CBD. So Ernie, you did defend it, I'll give you credit for that, but you didn't come up with it. So I think the real problem we have downtown is we have a human problem. And you can cure buildings, but unless you deal with a human problem and find a way to deal with people who live on the street, and find a way to get them off the street and get them into society, into useful beings, or if they belong in an institution for some reason because of mental incapacity or whatever reason, then we need to find a way to do that. But you're not going to cure some of those problems as long as you have people living on the street. People are not going to invest in those areas.
Thank you. Ms. Perry to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. President, I'd like to call a question.
Okay, previous question has been called. Mr. Holden is the only speaker remaining on the queue. Ms. Perry, your desire? Ms. Perry, your desire? Previous question has been called.
I'd really like to call the question. It's almost lunchtime.
Let's open the roll on the previous question. Let's open the roll.
I always listen to you speak. I love hearing you speak, not today. You know, I love.
Madam Kirk, please open the roll on the previous question. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes, one no.
Okay, previous question is called. This ends discussion. Let's proceed with the vote.
Yes.
Madam Kirk, please open the roll on item number eight. Roll is open. All members have an opportunity to vote. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes, three no's.
That is approved. Fourth with, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Next item.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number one is still on the desk. As a public convenience or necessity in Council District Four, and I understand Councilman Labange does support the granting the application.
Is that a motion or is a motion required?
A motion is required.
Mr. Labange? Item number one. Mr. Labange.
Los Angeles Police Department has no objections to this. My Director of Planning Renee White has reviewed it closely and I recommend approval. Thank you.
Okay, members wishing to be recognized on item number one, seeing none. Madam Kirk, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Item number one is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number thirty-seven was on the desk. That is an ordinance and there are fourteen council members present. Now do you wish to vote on that item?
Let's, item thirty-seven now before us. Members wishing to be recognized on item thirty-seven, seeing none. Madam Kirk, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number ten, called special by Councilmember Pacheco. There are two amending motions that have been distributed to the council members.
Item number ten before us, Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I just wanted to include ten A, which would give us the thermal imaging cameras for our fire department. This was an item where we anticipate that the state was going to provide some grants. Unfortunately, that never materialized, so we were prepared for that by providing funding in the UP in this fiscal year's budget. So I just want to include it in the March report so that we can move forward and get our firefighters those thermal imaging cameras this year. Unfortunately, I don't think the state will ever give us a grant in that area considering the financial constraints that they have, they're going through right now. So I just simply wanted to move ten A and the entire ten as amended.
Okay, other members wishing to be recognized on item ten, Ms. Miskowski.
Ten B is a technical amendment found by the CAO and the Police Department. It just authorizes movement within the Police Department from one account automotive parts to automated purchases. It does change recommendation three slightly, and that's what ten B accounts for. So I join in Mr. Pacheco's suggestion or request that we approve ten with A and B.
Okay, are there any objections to either of those amendments? Seeing none, then let's consider item number ten as amended. Madam Kirk, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Item ten as amended is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number thirty-nine was being held on the desk for Councilmember Galanter.
Ms. Galanter, your questions have been resolved. She moves approval. Ms. Miskowski? None on this item. Madam Kirk, please open the roll on item thirty-nine, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number twenty-nine, called special by Councilmember Miskowski. There is a substitute motion that has been distributed to the council members.
Ms. Miskowski.
As was indicated, this is just a substitute, a substitute motion on twenty-nine to allow the city attorneys-off to continue to administer the dispute resolution program. It puts all the money in the right accounts and I recommend approval.
Okay, other members wishing to be heard on item twenty-nine, seeing none. Madam Kirk, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Item twenty-nine is approved.
Fourth with.
Fourth with, please. Next item.
Item number thirty-two, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn? Mr. Labange?
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. As always, thank you for calling in special. This resolves a problem that we had with the Los Angeles Police Department's ability to train with the bicycle unit. We've had a stakeholder's meeting in Griffith Park. It is not going to be in any part of the park, but in the area known as Toyon Canyon, which is controlled by the Department of Public Works, and I recommend approval. I want to thank the fine sergeant for the LAPD bike detail and also his great captain who's here today. I ask for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be recognized, seeing none. Madam Kirk, please open the roll on item number thirty, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Next item.
Item number thirty-two, called special by Councilmember Zine.
Ms. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. On January eighth, a sixteen-year-old student waited in a bus stop in the middle afternoon in the San Fernando Valley was murdered, and the crime has not been solved. And at the request of the Los Angeles Police Department West Valley Detectives, we are offered a reward of $25,000. And while we have this crime wave taking place in the city of Los Angeles, it's a sad commentary that a sixteen-year-old who was waiting in a bus stop after school is gunned down in broad daylight. So I would ask that we approve that and hope individuals will come forward with information leading to the perpetrators of this crime that occurred at 22134 Sherman Way in Canoga Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Other members wishing to be recognized, item thirty-two before us. Madam Kirk, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President. Do you wish to recess, regroup in the meeting and go into the special council meeting?
Let us do that. Madam Kirk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Grohl, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Rudy Thomas, Weiss, Zinedine Padiya, thirteen members present in quorum.
Okay, we are now in the special meeting to one item agenda. With public hearing having not been held, we will hold a public here in council. We do have quite a few cards on item number one of the special meeting agenda. So as we did with item eight of the regular meeting agenda, I would ask for brevity. And if prior speakers have made similar comments or expressed similar concerns, I ask that you try not to be too repetitive. At this point, the council calls forward Polly Ward, followed by Richard McMinn, Michael Tunic and Jerry Daniel. One minute per speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Polly Ward and I represent the Hillside Federation. I'm the president of the Federation. We had, I had, was going to speak in opposition to this resolution today because we have not had time to get answers to a lot of questions. A lot of those questions have been answered this morning out in the hallway, and I'm going to remove my opposition and thank you for allowing me to be here today.
Thank you very much.
Richard McMinn, we have to remember why we're here today. That's because there's some valuable open spaces up in the hills. That's not open space for homeowners that live up there, that's public open space. So even though the taxpayers from that area are going to pay for this property, it's there for everybody in the city. It's a valuable resource. It's there for us to protect. Once we protect it, it's safe forever. If we don't protect it, it's gone. So just keep, remember that when you vote. This is a public resource for everybody in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tunic, followed by Jerry Daniel, Shell Willens, Paul Edelman and Mark Kennesi.
My name is Michael Tunic and I'm president of the Briar Summit Homeowners Association. I'd like to thank all of you for allowing me to address you on this issue and for taking the swift actions that you have on it so far. I just want to give you a little background info on how this assessment district came about because I think it's important that you understand it in its proper context. Briar Summit's a little cul-de-sac enclave of about fifty-five homes off of Mulholland and Laurel Canyon. The top of Briar Summit's a hundred-two-acre, fifteen-hundred-foot green space peak with commanding three-hundred-and-sixty-degree views. It's home to deer, bobcats, coyotes and many species of birds and plant life. Half of it's owned by the DWP and an antenna farm company, the other half's privately owned. Over the years, the various owners of the private half have tried to put up housing developments ranging in size from a hundred tract homes down to three luxury homes on steroids. To do so would have required major land excavation, roads and sewer line construction and the possible extension of Briar Summit over to Upper Nichols Canyon Road, thus creating a new canyon thoroughfare cut through. It also would have resulted in the displacement of the wildlife, the destruction of the flora and possible flooding problems in the downslope areas.
If I can ask you to conclude, please.
Excuse me?
If I may ask you to conclude, please.
Okay. Basically, we banded together two years ago and the neighborhood has raised over $300,000 locally to purchase three option periods, to purchase, towards an option purchase agreement. We've been doing this in conjunction with the MRCA and the Mountain Restoration Trust. We've addressed, we've been addressing all the homeowners associations so far that would be affected by this assessment district to get their blessings on it. We're still in the process of that as we speak to date. Now, a single association has opposed us. I urgently ask you for the same support. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jerry Daniel, followed by Shell Willens, Paul Edelman.
Thank you, Ms. Padiya. Members of the council, I stand before you today as chairman of the Mountains Restoration and Conservation Authority and urge you to approve our bold efforts to acquire up to thirteen hundred additional parcels that are currently in private ownership that could become public and allow us to do what we do best and we have done best for twenty-two years. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Willens?
Hello, I'm Paul Edelman with the MRCA. Shell Willens has left and Joe Edmiston, Executive Officer of the MRCA, will speak for the MRCA.
Okay. Mark Kennesi, followed by Stephen Harris, Dash Stollars and Joe Edmiston.
Yes, thank you, council members. Just urge your support for this proposal. And I'm a forty-plus-year resident of Los Angeles and twenty-year homeowner in the hills. And as all of you or many of you know, that the hills are always being crowded with more development, here's a chance to allow a measure that allows for funds to be funded directly into these various districts or separate districts to be developed or to be looked at for property to be purchased. And we ask you, ask that you also not be concerned with the MRCA handling these funds or their structure, as I think, given their history in the Santa Monica Mountains, they've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harris?
My name is Steve Harris. I'm with the Mountains Restoration Trust. We're a twenty-year land trust dealing in protecting and enhancing the resources in the Santa Monica Mountains. We've been involved in the assessment district since it was proposed in the Santa Monica Mountains and find it a wonderful opportunity for the community to help support the public agencies in its acquisition and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dash Stollars?
I'm Dash Stollars with the MRCA and I defer my time to Mr. Edmiston.
Okay, now Mr. Edmiston to be followed by Tom Watson, Dr. Arnold Newman and Ingrid Brown.
Mr. President, members, Joe Edmiston, Executive Officer of the Mountains Restoration and Conservation Authority. I just want to extend my appreciation on behalf of all the people that worked on this, the community members who appeared before you. Especially, I want to thank Polly Ward for her diligence in looking into this, and I really appreciate Polly, your, where is Polly back there? Really want to appreciate Polly's working with us and the members of this council that have made the motion and seconded this motion. We're really moving forward and I hope that this can be a template for other areas in the city where we're able to work cooperatively to bring the precious open space that all of us need. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Watson?
Hi, I'm Thomas Watson. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Henneken, Bennett and Dorman, but I'm here as a resident on Mulholland. I'm very aware of how important it is to conserve the area, both for me as a resident and also for all the visitors and tour buses that come through constantly. It's also essential that this happen immediately. There's plenty of construction going on right now, which is changing the area. This is an urgent proposal. I recommend that you pass it. And I also want to commend Councilman Labange for his great efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Arnold Newman, followed by Ingrid Brown and Shontae Newman.
Thank you. I am Director of the International Society for Preservation of Tropical Rainforest, which also has interests in conservation of wildlands everywhere. Today, I come to you specifically as Chair of the Fossil Ridge State Park, Oak Forest Canyon Task Force of the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association. I can say that the community at large loudly applauds this assessment district. It's our last great chance to, it opens a vault of opportunity for the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy to do what it does best, acquire these open lands. Everything you see and read and more will be acquired through these funds in perpetuity. We can't let this opportunity pass. I also want to mention lastly that our organization has acquired over thirteen thousand petition signatures for the preservation of these lands. It's either going to go to development in perpetuity or the way that God ordained, open space for the people of Los Angeles forever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brown and Ms. Newman.
I am a resident of Sherman Oaks and adjacent, my property is adjacent to Fossil Ridge, one of the areas that will be incorporated in the purchase. And I just want to say, all morning I've been listening to how problems presented on how we can improve our communities and what we can do and who's going to fund it. The way we're going to improve our communities, purchase more parkland and who's going to fund it? The property owners of the community. What a perfect solution. No one's asking for funds from any government agency. It's coming from the community. And my second point is, the property that is adjacent to my house, a builder developer owns, has the only natural stream in the area. And what he proposed to do with that stream is to put a road on top of it and was able to get permits to do so. If we can stop that, if we can preserve the wildlife, the bobcats, the deer that live in the community, one way is to make sure that stream is always a stream, to make sure that this area remains open to the public and is available for the neighbors in the area and the community to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Newman?
I've lived in Sherman Oaks my whole life, my entire life, but I've enjoyed it immensely. To wake up and see deer and animals has been such a pleasure. I've been blessed and I just hope that general. I've lived in Sherman Oaks my whole life, my entire life, but I've enjoyed it immensely. To wake up and see deer and animals has been such a pleasure. I've been blessed, and I just hope that generations to come can experience this and to see why LA is so great and to see these mountains and not to see them crowded with houses and why we actually live in these mountains is to see and to look out and see them and not to see homes and to see this wildlife, and thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for this item. Council members, beginning with Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm here today to join, first of all, I need to formally move the report of the committee because I don't think we had a quorum when the matter was before committee, so I move that before the council and urge its approval. And I'm standing here today with Cindy Misakowski, Wendy Gruehl, and Tom Labonge. We all represent portions, I said Wendy Gruehl, did I say Tom Labonge? Tom Labonge. The great graduate, Marshall High, isn't it?
Football.
And I'm standing here with all of them because we're running out of open space. They're not making any more open space in the Los Angeles area. And you know, someone told me something interesting the other day, a quote from Robert Kennedy that I had not heard before, that was, "When you're talking about the environment, you can't live off the interest, you're only living off the principle." And the principle is rapidly, rapidly depreciating. And so what we're doing today is joining with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and giving the people who live in the Santa Monica Mountains a choice. They're going to have a choice to decide whether to self-assess themselves a very modest sum over the next several years in order to assist the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy in capturing and preserving for the public forever precious remaining open space. And in a sense, we're giving people a choice to do something that's rather selfless in a sense, because true, the people who live in the Santa Monica Mountains will, for the time they live in the mountains, have the most immediate opportunity to enjoy the preservation. But you know what? It's not being preserved for their benefit alone, because they will move, they will move on, others will move in the area, will move out of the area, and generations to come in the future will be grateful that those people who chose to live in the Santa Monica Mountains today chose to assess themselves a modest fee to ensure the preservation of open space for the future. So I salute everyone who came here today and everyone who came here today. This is going to be a very unusual sort of campaign. We talked about this in committee. This is word-of-mouth stuff. This is neighbor-to-neighbor, homeowner association to homeowner association. Spread the word in your communities that this is a good thing for the community, this is a good thing for the mountains, this is a good thing for the future of the Southern California region, and I urge my colleagues to join, all of us from the mountain areas, including that great, great graduate over there, Tom Labonge, in vote for this measure. And Tom Labonge is the person who brought this to our attention here in the council and deserves an awful lot of credit. It ping-ponged over here from Cindy Misakowski by way of Joe Edmiston, by way of Wendy Gruehl. Thank you all.
Ms. Gruehl. Ms. Gruehl.
I am pleased as well to stand up and support this today and want to recognize particularly the work of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. This is an important opportunity for the voters to decide about what they want to see in their neighborhoods, and we do need to preserve open space as much as possible up in those communities. I've had the opportunity so many times, whether it be Freiman Canyon or Runyon Canyon or other projects up there, to walk in those communities. We need to continue to preserve those, but we also need the resources to do it. And so I look forward to the public discussion, as I've had conversations both with Polly Ward and Joe Edmiston and others, the further conversation with the neighbors to talk about what's going to be best for the community. And I'm pleased that we're standing up here with my colleagues to make sure that this goes forward, that the process continues, and so that we have an opportunity to preserve our neighborhood in those open spaces. So I ask my colleagues as well to join in support of this motion before us today.
Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations to everybody. I rise in full support of this today. I think it's an incredible idea, and I would like to also let you know about what we're doing here with a council motion that Councilor Misakowski launched. The number of us are working on, that my office is helping convene a group on for an urban land trust here in Los Angeles, and I hope that we can count on your support for that, too. I'm sure many of you were just as concerned as us when reading how parks' money is distributed in this city. And we know that those jewels of the Santa Monica Mountains have to be preserved, have to be conserved, and that everybody gets to benefit from them. But we also have to gobble up those pieces, those little lots that are in the middle of the city where people can have green space, and we can make sure that that greening happens in all parts of the city. And I really look forward to a historic coalition, because in the past, we've often pitted environmentalists against each other, saying, "You're either for the Santa Monica Mountains or for urban parks," and we know that we can be for both of them. So today, this is the right step forward for those hills in Los Angeles, for the areas that so much of that incredible green space for all of us is there, and you have my full support. And then next, when we look at doing this citywide for the hills, the flats, for the coastal areas, everywhere, I think we can make history in this city together. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Misakowski.
Thank you. I just rise to share in the enthusiasm and excitement about this proposal, and particularly the Mountain Recreation and Conservancy Authority, to come and propose this. As we know, in the past, there has been limited dollars, limited resources available to buy for parkland, and there has been some kind of battle at times about where we should spend that money. This is an opportunity, this is a tool, that we are going to avail ourselves of and let those folks in the mountains help themselves, help preserve some of this land, which will then create less competition for those public park dollars, whether through Prop K, Prop 12, Prop 40, so we can look more effectively at looking at the larger pieces in our inner-city areas. The other thing I just want to point out again is that this is just an opportunity. It is a tool, not unlike the tool we just voted on in Item 8, which was a community downtown saying, "Let's use another tool to avail ourselves of opportunities to improve our community." This council, I think, is being responsive to neighborhoods that come forward for themselves and say, "Let us try to help themselves, listen to us, work with us, and let's be innovative." The other thing I just want to compliment, the Conservancy has learned a little bit from the city of Los Angeles, and with this proposed assessment district, if it's approved, there will be an automatic oversight committee of citizens in the area to help guide and oversee the expenditure of public dollars that would come from the assessment. The other very, very beneficial thing is that the area is broken up into essentially quadrants, so that as the communities assess themselves, it doesn't all go into one end or one area of the mountains, but it will be effectively spent in all areas of the mountains, so that the benefits will accrue to the areas and the communities and the neighborhoods from whom the benefits are going to be received. So I think it was well thought out, well derived, and again, this is just giving people the opportunity to decide themselves whether or not they think this program has benefit and they want to assume this responsibility. So I think it's a win-win, wonderful plan, and I am hoping we get a council unanimous vote.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I met briefly, I mean, very briefly, to find out about this project, and my only concern is the assessment, where people are going to be paying dollars into this assessment fund. I know they're going to take a vote on that issue. If there's anyone who's got any negative comments regarding assessment, the fact that it's going to cost them money, and when it comes to costing people money, it always concerns me. And I wish I could say we take part of that $2.4 billion and help refurbish not only downtown, but help rekindle and maintain the area in the question region, the Santa Monica Mountain area. But is there any concern, and I wasn't at the committee meeting, maybe Councilor Misakowski or Councilmember Gruehl, Councilman Weiss, is there any opposition to this because of the cost to the property owners? Has there been any concern about that? If there's not, then you've got my support. That's my only reservation. If I could get an answer, I know there's no staff report, and I know the historian knows, but whose district does it represent the most? Tom's district? And that's my concern. And is there any...
Mr. Zine, I believe you've heard support from the various council...
I'd like to ask staff, there's no staff on it.
Mr. Zine, I believe you've heard support for this from the various councils who cover that.
You've got to understand what this is before us. It's an opportunity to people to assess themselves, just like if they were getting streetlights, just like if they're doing street improvement, and that's the great thing about it. And it's up to the Conservancy, and we'll be watching them and helping them inform the public that live in the assessment area, and they make a choice. It's a tool. It's a tool. And there will be some people who will not want to do this, but there'll be others who will because they fought so long and so hard to preserve the mountains. And I want to preserve those, I just want to make sure that safeguard of those people, it's heard on the other side of the fence also.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I wanted to congratulate Marvin Browdy, the father of the Santa Monica Mountains, and his great deputy at the time, Cindy Misakowski, now councilwoman, for this ongoing effort that is taking place here, and also congratulate other members of council who have taken advantage of the opportunity to find space in their districts. Former councilman Mike Hernandez and the work that you've done in the Highland Park area, getting the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancies to go east, and then Jan Perry, before her, Rita Walters, get the Santa Monica Conservancy to go south to the Water and Power Boneyard that was down there on Compton and Slauson, if I remember correctly. That's real important. All that work was real important, but we have to continue the work. And this gives us an opportunity with the communities that are in this assessment district, which is the area roughly from Sunset Boulevard north through Mulholland over to Ventura Boulevard roughly, and from the 405, both east and west, towards Griffin Park, both ways. Real important, and it gives an opportunity to be a partner, because all these people here have been to hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of community meetings fighting to preserve the canyons. And one thing, when you fight to preserve a canyon or an old reservoir on open spaces, it's there for the time beyond our time. So think about this, everybody. We support this here, we know that in future generations, Angelenos who are crossing Mulholland Drive on a hot summer day when the Santa Ana winds are blowing and Randy Newman is on that radio, they're looking out at land that someone put together for future generations to enjoy. So I just wanted to thank this opportunity for members of council. I know we'll have some tough questions from the great councilman of the 10th District, but that's okay, because that's what this is all about, to ask those tough questions. But then we give it an opportunity for the people to assess themselves. $40 is the rough estimate about where it could be, and then we assemble the land together for future generations. I just wanted to thank members of council who support it, and know that all of us will appreciate future generations of Angelenos. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burton.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This is a very unusual day. We're able to really accomplish a couple of major things for the city. First of all, I want to extend my congratulations to Joe Edmiston and the Conservancy. I know they've been tremendous help, not only for the Santa Monica Mountains, but they've also helped me tremendously preserve open areas in the 12th District. So you're working with somebody really who has dedication. Jerry Daniels, I see him sitting here for all the time I've been in the council, I've seen him fighting for Polly Ward, fighting for preserving the hillsides, and this is a means of doing it. I must remind all of you that we need to think in terms globally with our city, because I don't care, it doesn't matter what happens with secession, we're still going to live in the same area, and we need to preserve the areas that are important. That includes downtown, it includes the Chatsworth Reservoir, it includes the Santa Monica Mountains. So I would hope that some of the members would think in terms, you know, who are hillside representatives, need to think in terms of other areas that are not as fortunate. The hillside areas basically are capable of putting together an assessment district because it's an affluent area. Unfortunately, downtown doesn't have the same ability, particularly the areas that are drawn within the redevelopment area. So you need to think in terms of that. We are, regardless of what happens with secession, we are related to each other in all areas of the city, and we need to look out for areas like the Santa Monica Mountains, and this is a major step today, and a new tool that I think was really innovative in putting together, and I hope that we'll continue to look at all areas of our city and try to preserve the things that are important to us. So I would urge my vote.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I know that there were some council members earlier questioning the assessments or the subsidies or the taxidermy money in downtown, and I noticed that the report...
Hi, Mr. Burton.
The report talks about the fact, because Mr. Labonge asked the question, whether public facilities would be assessed fees as part of the assessment district, and that's a subsidy if we were looking at this. But let me tell you this much, the report says quite clearly that if the publicly-owned properties can only be excluded if the property receives no benefit. If I read that correctly and the law is clear, then I think we have a straightforward case for an exception to the fee from the standpoint that a fire station is not going to, the station, the property itself, is not going to benefit from the open space in the mountains. So that property wouldn't be assessed. The public facility would not be assessed, because as we have seen under the case law and interpretation of our business improvement districts, the reason that we're not exempt of those districts is because the cleaning crews cleaned the whole street, and we're on that street. And so, under this model, if there's open space a half a mile away that we're paying for, this assessment district is paying for, that fire department or that public building on public property isn't going to get a benefit from that. It's very clear that, and I'm very comfortable with that, that we will not be asked to pay for the assessment unless it can be proven that the public property gets a benefit. So the law already protects us as an entity. We've seen it used and utilized in the business improvement district area, so if you need guidance on how the law is applied, look at those case laws, and you will see that our properties will not meet the standard of enjoying a benefit. Now, the reason we're doing this is not for property to get a benefit, but for people to get a benefit, and we support that, and I support that. I support the direction that we're going in with this assessment district, because it's about people enjoying open space, and you know what? We can even go so far as in terms of nature and the animals enjoying open space. But it's definitely not an effort to bring a benefit to some piece of property or land that the city owns. So I think under the current structure and current law, and I would just ask as a friendly amendment, that the city clerk do the appropriate analysis under the law as to whether or not our land will get a public benefit, because the way I read it, it's not going to, and therefore, we won't be asked to put anything in the assessment fee. So I would support it.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. There's a motion and a second. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I had a question, this is probably for Joe, and you know that I'm a longtime supporter of Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and still a member of WODOC, and was a staff person here when you worked with the city in collaboration on the Slauson-Compton Park, and I was wondering what this effort might do in terms of bringing additional money for operational costs to parks such as the Augustus B. Hawkins Park at Slauson-Compton, because that is our nexus from this part of the city to the mountains, so that we can teach people about the mountains here and then get them actually to go to the mountains and take them there as well.
I think everybody derives a benefit, and you know that we have, every weekend, we have buses that come from the Hawkins Park out into the Santa Monica Mountains, and so there will be more areas. The way benefit assessment districts are set up, unfortunately or fortunately, the only benefit, substantial benefit that can be derived, and the money can only be spent within the area where it is generated. So I wish that we could use this and help with maintenance in other places, but the law is very clear, you can only use it not only within just the outside boundary, but within each individual area, so the money has to stay there.
So, well, let me make a suggestion. As we proceed through our seeking Prop K funds, that we make sure that we work together to leverage those dollars and that you can help us make sure that we get our fair share so that we can continue our relationship. And I can support you and you can support me.
Absolutely, it's important. It's important to us to do that, and to the extent that the $160,000 a year that is used for brushing in this measure, to the extent that that supplants other monies that would be used for brushing, there's some small ability there, but I don't think that we're talking more than, you know, $5,000 or $10,000. think that we're talking more than, you know, five or $10,000 frankly.
Of course, that would go a long way in Slauson-Compton.
It goes a long way. And as you know, we work with you on this. And we have a beautiful park down there, and everyone thinks it's one of the jewels of the city. We're not going to let that down.
Mr. Holton.
Mr. President, we haven't had a report on this. First big item that's ever come before the council, no report. Somebody should come up and report. Still not going to change by voting no to high, but give me a report anyway. Are you going to hold my time while I give a report? Thank you. Written, it tells us what it does for the city of L.A., what it benefits at all, if any. Okay. What it will do, what the money will be used for, et cetera. And whether or not, if you're going to use bonds to acquire the land, is the city liable at all if there's a default on the part of the district? How can there be any insurance that the district will in fact pay on the debt, especially?
Colored you from the city attorney's office. The item before you is to form and assess, actually, is to form the assessment district in the Santa Monica Mountains. There are two districts being formed. And the state law requires that before this may proceed any further, that it gets the approval of the local governing body, in this case, the city of L.A., since all of the property in the district is within the city of Los Angeles. It's an assessment district. And so therefore, the assessments have to reflect the special benefit that goes to each individual parcel. And the assessment has to be apportioned accordingly. The assessment will be a lean on the property, as would other assessment districts. Under Prop 218, if any city properties receive any special benefit, then the city would have to pay that assessment. Under Prop 218, if any parcel, city parcel is receiving any special benefit, then the city as property owner would have to pay that assessment on that parcel of property.
Tell me, how can the city receive any special benefit for open space, open, out of the open land? What benefit? That means we're going to be paying money to the city. And the claim will be by that special district that we're receiving benefit. Tell me how the city would receive any special benefit.
The definition of special benefit is going to be defined, if not already, in the various documentation that the district will be putting together. It's a, it will be included in the definition of what the improvement would be added to.
And if we would have to say about that?
Well, no, the...
Mr. President, I'm asking you one thing, and you know, you keep running the time. I know you do that really nicely for other people, but you can't even give me that consideration. Go ahead and continue.
There will be a public hearing. The documentation necessary to describe what exactly they are doing, what have to be in the information supplied to each and every property owner within the district. So we will be informed of what they will be doing. This is an initial step that is necessary under the state law, just to start the whole process rolling.
CLA, you want to copy?
My understanding of councilman's...
By the way, have you done an analysis on what it represents?
No, we have not. My understanding is...
Then why is it before us?
My understanding is that we received this on Friday, and we will be working with the city clerk. And my understanding of Councilman Pacheco's motion is, goes to your discussion of whether or not the city is receiving any special benefit.
Will this come back to us?
No, it will. Well, it will come back to the city, because the city will be a property owner within the district.
No, it's not coming back. This is the final vote. And you can run the time if you like. But let me just say this. We had a lot of demagoguery from demagogues this morning, and some applause from the people when they spoke on downtown redevelopment area being created for the inner city, where the area that's blighted and dead. Some of these people applauding, oh, we can't use our tax money for that. But let me tell you what we use our tax money for the mountains for. To acquire property, millions of dollars, when we invoke eminent domain to acquire property from developers who cannot develop the property for the maximum best use in the Santa Monica Mountains. Then the people who live in the area encourage the city to buy the land, which we did. Now, how much money are we going to give the area at the expense of the inner city when they applaud, when we tried to do something to revitalize the inner city? We freeze the tax base in an area that's blighted, that nothing is not being done. Ah, that's okay for them. Demagoguery from demagogues. And the inner city representatives get pretty sick and tired of that. You've got to do something for the whole city, do something for the whole city. We have spent millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars to acquire land, because we denied the development of the land in the area of the Santa Monica Mountains. Therefore, the law says, the landowner is entitled to develop to the maximum best use. So the city bought the land, so it can be converted to parkland in the area, and then the roads in there also, and I voted for, the new members are not aware of that, to preserve the Santa Monica Mountains, as we see them today. Now, I'm saying to you, how much is enough? If you're going to help one part of the city, then you have to help the other part for their lifestyle as well. For those who sit over there and say, okay, not for you and vote no, and I'm going to say, not for you today, and I'm voting no. Because I'm voting no, not because I'm against what they're trying to do, but I don't have all the facts. Why should I vote in the dark on an issue like this, when all the information was placed on the table on the previous issue? That's hypocrisy. Gone too far. And it's not fair. So I can say to you, ladies and gentlemen, it's not that I'm against what you're proposing, if you would have paid for. But the fact of the matter that it's a default in the bonds, it's an entire city. And all the other taxpayers then become liable, whether you shake your head and whether you like it or not. The fact of the matter that you are going to be acquiring land from the landowners, taking that money, taking it off the tax roll, that affects the whole city. You're removing the land from the tax rolls, that the current landowner has to pay. Am I right, Mr. City Attorney?
Any public property would...
You're not... Is that right, that you remove it from the tax rolls?
If it becomes public property, it is off the tax bill.
It's off the tax rolls, which everybody pays. If you had a report of how it's land, we're talking about what they can buy for 40 million bucks, to lay it on me. But you don't have a research report. And this is a final vote. It's a final vote. And if you're taxpayers and care about taxpayers, and you're applauding before, then make sure then all the facts are on the table before the vote, before the vote is taken. I say to you, ladies and gentlemen, as much as I regret having to do something that I'd never done before and had to vote against proposals to acquire more open space, today, because the facts are not all on the table, I have no other choice but to do that. The CLA cannot say, yes, we should go forward, because, yes, they have open information, because they don't. They don't know what the ultimate cost is going to be to the taxpayers of this city. And so for those who care about taxpayers, let me see what your vote's going to be like on this, and a $100 million housing trust fund that they voted on before, this is going to revive more housing in the inner city. That's all lip service in the past. And when I tried to caution them, that you couldn't put it together, now you have an opportunity to put it together, and then they voted no on that. It's just disrespect to the inner city. So the inner city is going to disrespect them. I'm voting no.
Thank you, Mr. Holton. Mr. Labange.
I call for the question after the great councilman of the 10th District, who was the father of the Barrowman Hills State Recreation Area, now Kennethon Recreation Area. How could you say that about parks? I call for the question.
Thank you very much. And you are the final speaker, so the previous question has been called, it's ended discussion. We have the matter before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. This concludes the special meeting agenda for today. Let us now adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting agenda. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Public comment period for today's meeting. The council calls for it at this time Leonard Shapiro, Linda Dionne, and Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Mr. Chairman, and three members of the city council who are still in their chairs listening, this is the public comment period. And I just wanted to bring, thank you, number four, I just want to bring to your attention several things that you might not be aware of. Here's an official document from the county assessor's office stating 1988-89 tax diversion. At that time, there was a law which had passed by Dick Common, had pushed this law through, that each tax roll must contain how much money is being diverted to the CRA's of the unit. And of course, it shows that LA, the city of LA in 1988-89, which is the last year for which these figures are available, it shows that the city got $86,421,000 in one year from their 18 CRA areas. Now, how many people realize that? Do you realize how much the city could do right now with 86 million? And actually, right now, it's a lot more probably. This is 12 years old. It's probably $120 million. If you had your share of this $120 million, which is the lion's share, because the county knows about this, and that's why they're suing you now, and they know they do not have to be taken in by the CRA project. So that therefore, you have $86 million diverted in 1988-89. So you get a little idea how much money is being involved here, that these people from the CRA are getting this money. Now, the question again is, $2.4 billion being invested as a cap, a so-called cap on this item. When the time will come, they'll raise that cap on you. But $2.4 billion is being diverted right now. They're telling you that they're going to do this. Every time I hear about a $2.4 billion project, I hear about a vote of the people. I hear the people voting on police facilities, on fire facilities, on school facilities, on library facilities. But here's $2.4 billion and no vote of the people. Nobody suggests that the people should vote through the city council. I think a project this big, it should be really given serious attention, because what do you think the people in the Harbor area, in Hollywood area, and the San Fernando Valley are going to be thinking about this $86 million of taxpayers' money being diverted to the CRA's and being spent downtown on a downtown project?
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro.
Don't you think they could use that money in the San Fernando Valley? Couldn't they use that money in Hollywood? Can't they use it in the Harbor? Definitely, they could use it in the Harbor. But this is being all given.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to bring these points to the attention of the city council people, who really don't realize how many millions of dollars are being involved in projects that they just voted today to give, to give away. I think Ernie Bernard, if he's still available, will still be available here to start and commence a law action against you, and maybe hold you to some responsibility that you should be holding to. CRA is the answer to nothing. I'd like to go into their record sometime.
Mr. Labange for an introduction.
Quick introduction, members of council. We have from Palos Verdes, California. It's called the New Neighbors Program. It's their garden club. They come down here to City Hall and watch the city council in action, and visit the fourth floor, where all the historic pictures of this great city are, and up to the tower. And on a clear day, you can see, after you look through the Vincent Thomas Bridge. Thank you very much. And your great councilwoman, Janice Hawn, here greets you too. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Returning to public comment, Linda Dionne. And if she's no longer available, Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. Is Hawkins still with us? If not, then this does conclude public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Postings shall be posted and referred.
There are two excuses on the desk. Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused Tuesday, June 11th, to leave at noon for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Galanter is excused.
Councilmember Zine requests to be excused for city business Friday, May 24th, to leave at 11:30. A motion is required.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. White seconds. So ordered.
That clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. In conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. I ask the guards to please clear the chambers. Welcome back into open session. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 41 is settlement in the case of Johnson, Jordan, Reed, Wilson versus the city of Los Angeles. And that's in the amount of, excuse me, $81,087.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Next item?
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Are there any announcements today? I do have one, colleagues. You're all invited out this Saturday, and everybody watching at home is invited out this Saturday in the 7th District at Roger Jessup Park. This Saturday, May 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., we will be having an environmental fair. I believe there's been some held throughout the city in the last several months, and we're having one in the San Fernando Valley this weekend, beginning at 8:00 a.m. with several community cleanups. But the fair will include a lot of service providers, as well as some educational components on the environment for children and families from throughout the valley and throughout the city. So Roger Jessup Park in Pacoima, the environmental fair this Saturday. Everyone's invited. Mr. Garcetti.
For you fans as well, at midnight today at Grauman's Chinese Theater, The Attack of the Clones is coming. So for all you Star Wars fans, Number Two is coming. Yeah, I know, it kind of sounds like us, The Attack of the Clones, but this is going to be a lot more fun than watching council meeting. Oh, and parking is only $2. $2 for four hours. And that place has been booming. Thanks.
Other announcements? Ms. Zine.
This Saturday also is the Los Angeles Police Celebrity Golf Tournament at Rancho Park. A number of celebrities will be there participating. Families are encouraged to attend. The funds go to the memorial fund, which supports the widows of Los Angeles police officers killed in line of duty. And it's a wonderful opportunity to meet celebrities and have a wonderful day at Rancho Park in West Los Angeles, in Councilmember Weiss District, Councilmember Galanter's District, Somon District, and the city of Los Angeles. Rancho Park this Saturday starts at 10:00 a.m. Roots District, Rancho Park, lovely place. Take your families out and enjoy the day, and help support the LAPD.
And actually, this Friday, prior to that golf tournament, this Friday is our annual police memorial ceremony, just outside Parker Center, Friday, I believe at 1:00 o'clock. Again, all the public is invited to join us for that.
This is National Police Month, Police Week, celebrations and ceremonies in Washington, D.C., and throughout the country, recognition of the dedication of police officers.
Other announcements? Ms. Perry.
Mr. Labange has asked me to announce this, because I'm the chair of Public Works, and he sits on the committee with myself and Mr. Pacheco. The Second Annual Mousetrap Racer Contest and Electrical Vehicle Competition, Jordan High School, May 16th, noon to 4:00 p.m., location 2265 East 103rd Street.
For our pair of engineers, for the good work they're doing in our schools.
God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other announcements? Adjourning motions. Ms. Galanter.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Martha Brown Hicks, who a number of you may know. Martha had quite an interesting career, but she was perhaps best known for her work as the founding president of the Skid Row Development Corporation, and which played a major role in the creation of a whole network of social services and housing opportunities for people who have been living on our streets, some of whom still are living on the streets. She had run a number of other shelters as well. She had run a number of other shelters as well, and after she retired from that, she actually, when I first met her, she was working for the city of Santa Monica as the director of its grants and community services programs. And then she turned up, by the time I got to Los Angeles, she had beaten me here. She worked then with the redevelopment agency and the Skid Row Development Corporation. After she left the Skid Row Development Corporation, Mayor Reardon appointed her to the Airport Commission, and then she served for a while on the Library Commission. And the newspaper where I found out about this does not list a cause of death, but she was only 68. She survived by three children, Pamela, Angela, and Michael, her two sisters, Willis Marie Shepherd and Rosalie Jackson, one brother, DeWitt Kilgore, and one granddaughter.
All members, all members.
All members. Any others? Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, Ms. Hicks is a really fine person. She never said no to requests to help people in the inner city or wherever. She donated much of her time in the Skid Row area to improve the quality of life of people who are forgotten, never to be remembered in the minds of others. She was there with all of her heart and spirit. She had a program that she was directive of in the downtown Skid Row area. And called me down to take a look at it, and I must tell you, I was amazed by the fact that people who were lost, forgotten, and yet there in her environment, they were living again. And that's the role that many of us should play, but she was playing it very, very well. And she'll be missed because she will not be here in flesh to help us, but in the spirit, we know that she's done the job that she was sent here on the planet Earth to do and accomplished it very well. We can always see her in our minds, working for our constituents. I guess that's the spirit talking to us. Mr. President, members, I also have another individual. The name is La Shanette Renee Holliday Adigwe, who passed away on May 6th. She's the niece of a 10th district resident who was active in my Neighborhood Improvement Association. The services are planned for Saturday, May 18th at 11:00 a.m. at Progress Baptist Church, 2122 East El Segunda Boulevard in Compton. She survived by her husband, her parents, two sisters, and many more relatives. Obviously, she sounded like a very young person and will be missed.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of council, Mike Kazarian passed away. Before his time, he ran a successful produce business. He was a resident of Las Feliz area, involved in his community. His children, Michael and Kelly, and his wife Alma, survived his tragic death. And I ask that we adjourn in his memory as someone today.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any others? Ms. Zine.
Mr. President, colleagues, request we adjourn in memory of Catherine Lee, passed away on May 7th. Catherine was a resident of Inglewood. She is the mother of Los Angeles police officer Darius Lee, who works at Pacific Division. Catherine was born in L'Oreal, Mississippi, May 22nd, 1933, where she met her husband, Jimmy. Catherine and Jimmy were married for 49 years. She will be greatly missed. She is survived by Jimmy, her sons Darius and Terry, daughter Sherry, Fisara, and seven grandchildren. May she rest in peace.
Ms. Galanter has a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.